Welcome to the Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, April 16th. We'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Will you please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I think tonight's kind of gonna be kind of an exciting night. We got a kind of fun visitor presentation. We have five former mayors that are all still living within the community. So, we're gonna have an opportunity. We're gonna read a proclamation for them, and maybe they're willing to come up and say a few words. Maybe, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure.
See if we can come up and say a few words. Couple will, some probably won't, but I think it's really exciting that we have fifty years of mayors sitting in this room. Minus Bob, but it's not ten after yet, so he won't be here till ten after. But I think it's pretty exciting, so hopefully, again, we can have, hear a little bit from him and stuff like that. So anyways, let's get moving, so we can get to those guys. Roll call, Nate, please.
Councilmember Schultz?
Here.
Councilmember Bo?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Mayor Windshuttle?
Here.
Next, we'll move to item four, adopting the agenda. I do wanna make a note that there has been a revised agenda. We have added item number eleven, and then moved the remaining items up a number. And that is approving the official host city proposal for the 2018 Curling Night in America. And we'll have, there'll be some additional discussion on that. But that has been added to the agenda this afternoon. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda. So I have a motion by Councilmember Bo.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Geisler to adopt the agenda discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. We are gonna move into item number five, which is visitor presentation. And this is kinda what I was talking about. So we're gonna do a proclamation for the former mayors who served. And just for anybody at home that's...
Mark, do we wanna put the Boy Scouts first and give Bob a few more minutes?
The Boy Scouts won't be here till seven thirty.
So, and also, for anybody home watching, we're gonna have the proclamation and maybe a few words here. And then, we are gonna take a short recess that we have an opportunity to...
You have one note on that. If you wanted to, we could go over five, skip over to six, and go through some of the agenda, like consent agenda and stuff like that, if we wanted to give a little bit more time.
Give Bob a few more minutes.
Okay, we can do that. All right. Right away. Bob, Bob, Bob. So I don't have to do anything with visitor presentation. We can just go ahead and move item six and seven.
Or you could just come back to it altogether.
So officially, we're gonna come back to item five, which is visitor presentation. We'll move on to six. We're gonna approve the minutes of the April second council meeting. Were there any corrections or additions to that meeting? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Rowe.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz to approve the minutes of the April second council meeting discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Move this on to item number seven, which is consent agenda. Again, for anybody watching that might not know, consent are items that need council action, but not necessarily discussion. And, but although we can discuss any item in there if we choose. Again, discussion, if not, entertain a motion to approve consent.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion by Councilmember Geisler.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Councilmember Bo to adopt consent agenda discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. What, do you want me to rattle this whole agenda off?
As I go.
You're on a roll. You did text him?
Did he reply? Okay.
We'll go to item number eight, which is adopt resolution 2018-42, approving the concept plan for redevelopment of 650, 700, and 710 Chestnut Street. Is that, are we gonna get caught up in a long process here, on this one, or not?
No.
No, not too long.
Yeah, we can make it quick.
Okay.
It's pretty similar to what you've seen already before. Especially since we went through the purchase agreement process, it's a lot similar.
This is a con, I mean, this is really just a concept.
Yeah.
Okay, Liz.
That all depends on how many questions the former mayors may ask.
So Mayor and Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is the starting of the planning process for the redevelopment at the former Hot Spot and Michael's Cycles location. So this is one that we did deal with a couple of weeks ago by putting in place a purchase agreement to be able to acquire the property and allow the redevelopment to go forward. At this point, the developer is going through the process of actually planning for the site and going through that planning process. And this concept plan is the first phase of that. This is something that went to the Planning Commission this last week, and they did recommend approval. I'll turn it over to Liz to go through it.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, members of the council, and Mr. Mayor. We've got a concept plan request tonight for three different sites within the general vicinity. So I've kinda highlighted on this area where that is.
You didn't have that curling site built yet?
The former Hot Spot building, Michael's Cycles, and then the CDA parking lot on the corner there.
What's being built on the other corner over there?
Just move on.
Doesn't touch the park.
So specifically, this is for 650, 700, and 710 Chestnut Street, which are those three sites that I just denoted. So they will be demolishing both of the buildings on that site and construct three new buildings as a part of the proposal, one of them being a Dunkin' Donuts. So in terms of the zoning that's out there right now and what they're proposing, it is consistent with the zoning districts they're in. So in total, the overall acreage of those three sites is 1.15 acres. In terms of what was there before, the underground tanks and gas station canopy have since been removed for some time. They will be maintaining the southerly access that is shared with the Walgreens site to the south. So they will be maintaining that as a part of this request tonight. They're also showing another access into Highway 41, just a little modified from what you see today. So here's the kind of proposed layout of the site. So again, you see three buildings, kind of in that gray footprint color. So the Dunkin' Donuts on the south, a multi-tenant building in the middle, and then a single-tenant building on the corner of Walnut and Chestnut Street. So again, as you can see, the access into the site is just kind of in the center there, and then the shared access on the south will remain.
And do they see those other sites as being all retail?
Right, yep, all retail use.
Liz, is that, is there, I assume there's a drive off of Walnut Street to go into that last building, right there?
Right here. So this will maintain the same access that is there for the CDA parking lot. So this parking lot is gonna remain in the CDA's ownership and use, so it's not a part of the use of these three buildings.
It's basically, one of the ways that we're able to deal with their parking issues is just basically flipping the parking lot this way.
Okay.
Parking lot remains with the CDA. It's not for that facility. That facility's parking is the section.
The three buildings will park from the central parking bay.
Right.
And signage will kind of be in that center area.
Right.
And doorways.
Gotcha, okay.
So they're showing roughly fifty spaces right now, not including the CDA parking lot. So they're just a couple under what's required for retail use. So that's obviously something that we can work with the applicant on as they come through for preliminary. They're showing some areas of landscaping, so we'll just kind of reference to the fact that the landscaping should be consistent with what you see at Walgreens on the boulevard there. So having the boulevard area in between the highway and the sidewalk, and continuing that through, and then just capitalizing on the green space areas that they have on the site for what it's worth. They are showing connections all the way through as well, so on kind of the west side to line up with the other sidewalks, and then some sidewalks interior. Here's more of a kind of three-D view of the site looking more northeasterly. So again, you see kind of the Dunkin' Donuts set up, the three different tenants on the multi-tenant building, and then to the north there. So the fact that they're located in downtown, we've always emphasized this sensitivity to the context that they're in, and promoting that with the design and materials that they're using. So they are using a majority of brick and cementitious siding, stucco and glass. They are planning to use a Chaska brick color for all three buildings, and incorporate some details within that that are reminiscent of what you see in downtown. So they provided a very well-rounded analysis of the overall area to show how they can tie in the buildings with these different elements. So we do applaud the applicant for the work that they've done with that. So it's just a matter of getting more detailed in the preliminary to understand kind of the elements that they're tying into with downtown. Couple other views here where they're kind of taking some pieces from other existing buildings. So in conclusion, we feel like at the concept level, they have done a very nice job of what they're proposing out there in terms of materials, analysis of their context, even the layout of the site. They've done a well-rounded job for that. So we are asking you to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2018-42, which is approving the concept plan for the redevelopment of 650, 700, and 710 Chestnut Street North, based on the conditions that are listed in that resolution. So I'm happy to answer any questions. That was a pretty quick presentation for you, but if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
One thing I did want to point out real quick on the parking with the CDA. Nate and I are going to the CDA meeting on Thursday. We've worked through, I think we've come up with something that looks like staff can support for parking. So they lose five spots in that, six spots in that parking lot that's back there. We've identified on-street parking that has not been striped in the past, actually sort of next to Cooper's Drive-Thru. It's up by sort of the entrance at Valley Dental that's there that we think can be suitable, 'cause it's really making sure that they have enough parking for their employees during the day. My gut tells me that even if we stripe it, they're probably never used, because there are employees that will just park over in Cooper's parking lot, and Gary's never had a problem with that. I think that'll probably continue. But we wanna make sure as part of this plan that we've identified where we can pick up some of that lost parking that's there. So I think we've got it to that point. We're going this week to have the discussion, but I think it's heading in the right direction.
I mean, that's generally, that lot's generally never been that many cars in there.
Four or five is pretty much what you see.
Okay.
But it is a loss of their property.
Right.
I mean, I get where they're coming from.
Are we paying them for those spaces?
So there, so the proposal that we'd have would be, it would be a cost of the actual development, but basically looking what the typical cost of a surface parking lot structure would be. So it'd be $6,000 per stall. And so it'd be about $36,000 for the total cost of taking that, but that would be a part of the development cost.
So I'm gonna ask the question, the fact that we are buying part of the Coopers, that's public parking.
Well, that can't be included anymore, because that's not necessarily a for-sure deal that's gonna go.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if that was the case, this wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because that's public.
Yeah. No, that's, that's something that we're still working through, but I don't think we can tie it together with this. It's, there's just too many unknowns.
When do they anticipate to be able to break ground?
I think as soon as the summer.
Yeah, we've talked to...
Will the Hot Spot be torn down? I guess that's the question.
They need help taking it down.
So we have June 30th? No, July 1st as the closing date proposed in the agreement.
Yes. Be great to have that down before fire. Fire and ice.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's, so they're on track to...
True.
We could have a big fire. They're on track for the planning process to be able to get through and be able to be on that timeline. So that's, every step that we're taking is trying to keep them in line with that.
Good, yeah, I think the concept plan of the building, the way they stair-stepped it back. Yeah, I like the... It looks really nice.
I like that a lot. It breaks up the straight line.
Looks really nice. I mean, in likelihood, they probably have a few tenants in mind, I would think, but they're probably not ready to share it at this point, but...
They need to finalize this, so they have the square footages, so they actually know.
Yeah, because you can definitely see there's gonna be different sizes in those buildings.
I think one of the positives, too, the architect is back here. He works in St. Peter, works in Mankato, two river towns that are pretty similar historic type of nature to Chaska. And so he brings some of the experience he's had working down there to be able to put towards this.
He did.
His nice job.
That, Liz, go to that look where you're kind of standing with Walgreens at your back looking down that lot. No, one of the photos you had there was that one, backup one, backup one. That, I just think is really a nice, should give us a nice, a good look, especially as you go up 41.
Well, especially then with Walgreens to the south, that it just kind of, just runs linear.
A continuation of.
The parking as well that's out in front of Walgreens.
Yep.
It just blends much.
Way better.
Looks like it's always been there.
If you look at the angle of the building from the top, it actually goes in line with Walgreens.
Right.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Is the assumption that the others will be retail, but not necessarily food, or?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what they said at the Planning Commission, that Dunkin' Donuts was the only one they were looking at in terms of food, and the others are retail spaces.
And that little outlaw building's not big enough for Wendy's, I assume.
Part of the problem with...
We know we can have a drive-through.
Part of the problem with two food uses here is parking.
Is parking, and circulation.
Yeah.
Right.
Now, I know it's a very small site. They're trying to do as much as they can with it.
And then they figure it out.
They did a nice job.
Condition thirteen.
All of us looking at that thinking, wow, that's a nice job. That's...
Usually the concept, usually the concept plan looks...
So don't change it.
We don't like that.
Is that...
You just dropped the part.
Somebody did my chair.
Not me.
Jonathan, are you up here?
Yes.
One of the other mayors.
Yeah, one of the other mayors. Is that north out onto 41? Is that a right-in, right-out, or is that both ways?
That's both ways. Current.
Right now, it's both ways. Eventually, it'll...
Are you talking about the street, or are you talking about that north entrance?
That, right, we're...
That's only gonna be right-in, right-out.
Both of the use, eventually.
Yeah, it looks great. We can't wait.
Question for you, Liz.
Yep.
Condition thirteen, and from the Planning Commission talked about the trash enclosures, enclosure, single. And I only see one. Is it just the one behind Dunkin', or?
There's two. There's one right here, and then one right here.
Okay, and they both, the trash truck would access that through the drive-through lane? Would there be enough clearance for a truck to get through, or how do they do that?
I don't think that's how they would...
They'd probably pull it out.
I guess I couldn't say specifically.
Pull it out.
Yeah. And they might even park there. It's unclear at this time.
Just curious how that would work.
Right.
Okay. I really like the look of it, too, so.
It's gonna class up that corner.
All right.
All right.
Love it.
Fabulous.
Thoughts? If not, I think we had some discussion. Is there any more discussion?
No. No, I'd make a motion to approve resolution 2018-42, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Bo.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Geisler, again, adopting resolution 2018-42, approving a concept plan for 650, 700, 710 Chestnut Street North. All right, discussion again.
Happy to see the progress moving forward.
Yeah, I don't know what we're gonna talk about after council meetings. We don't talk about when the Hot Spot's coming. It'll be five-minute meetings.
Yes.
All right, anything else? Last call? Just laughing. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, for the sake of time, for our other mayors, I don't know if...
Did you get ahold of him, Gary?
He didn't answer his phone. He didn't answer my text.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Cory said he was going to church tonight.
They said he was going to church tonight, so my gut feeling tells me that he maybe forgot, 'cause I think St. John's does that, the feeding.
The gatherings at six-thirty.
The gathering, so, I mean, that would be my speculation on a Monday night, that he maybe just got his head wrapped around that.
He's turned off the ringer, so.
And so, I don't know, Trace or...
Tracy left, no.
She's moved just in the, she'll be back. Ah, don't go, Gary, she'll be back.
All right, so again, I started talking about it, so...
It's a full-time job keeping you mayors, like...
Corral.
Corral.
So how about if the four of you come on up here? And, please, Trace? No? Will you guys come on up? Come on up. Guys, it's just a turn for me.
You folks can come.
First off, thanks, you guys, for being here. This is, again, pretty awesome. Again, the proclamation, I'm gonna read the proclamation, and we can kind of talk about it, because...
You should go to the microphone.
If you'd like, you can come up here, do your pictures, or wherever you want.
Yeah, if you wanna come back here, it's fine.
You can take my chair, or whatever works for anyone. But anyway, so we have created a proclamation here. Again, this is in recognition of the city of Chaska mayors for the past, over the past fifty years. Whereas, the office of the city mayor is a privileged position, representing not only the residents of the community that elect them, but all citizens. Whereas, the position requires individuals who are passionate about public service and who have positive, effective interaction with both government officials and their community. Whereas, it is very rare that a community can look back over fifty years and take pride in the fact that only six mayors have served the city during that time, and be able to state that all six individuals still reside within the community. Whereas, the continued residency of the mayors not only shows a sign of community stability, but also a sign of community unity and pride. Whereas, the city of Chaska wishes to recognize the six individuals who have served the community so well in the office of the Chaska city mayor over the past fifty years. Edgar Doc Ziegler, 1968 to 1975. Leon Schmidt, 1975 to 1978. Tracy Swanson, 1979 to 1984. Bob Ricky, 1985 to 2002. Gary Van Iel, 2003 to 2009. And Mark Windshuttle, 2010, current. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Windshuttle, mayor of the city of Chaska, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Chaska, do hereby honor those that have served the citizens of Chaska as mayor over the past fifty years, and thank them for their service and dedication to our community. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand the seal of the city of Chaska the sixteenth day of April in the year of our Lord 2018. So I'd like to project one of these to each of you guys. Thank you. And say thank you to you guys.
Hey, Mark. I just spoke to Bob. He is en route, so I don't know if we wanna wait on pictures. He's gonna be here in five minutes.
So maybe we've got a little, and I asked here, and I'm gonna give you this opportunity, only if you want, but maybe there's some highlight, lowlight, whatever, that happened in your term, that maybe somebody would be willing to come and ship. You don't have to if you don't want to. I know some people don't really care for the camera. While we're waiting for Bob.
I think one of the things that's often forgotten is in early December of 1967, we had a special election in the city of Chaska to go from a nine-member council with a weak mayor and three wards to our present system of city manager with an alderman-at-large and four wards. And that's what sent the whole process in motion. And needless to say, on being elected in 1968, March of 68, we had the, one of the highlights, of course, was dealing with Jonathan Newtown, which was just beginning its existence at that time. We put together a good staff of people to support us, and then Mr. Pat Halloran, who was city clerk at that time, suddenly became ill. And we unfortunately, a month before that, hired a secretary, Carol Delander, who I think still lives with us. And so we had about a four- or five-month period of time there with our staff that we had surrounded ourselves with. And the city clerk kind of micromanaged everything going on in the city of Chaska. And then one of the highlights was in August of 1968, one night, we had about forty-five, forty, forty-five people in the council chamber, and a totally different complexion or makeup as to what we had been experiencing up to them. They were all local residents from down here. And we had a very wet, wet August, and they were up there and said that we're gonna have a flood in the spring of 1969. What are you going to do about it? And I can still remember that. And we did an actuality then with our city engineering firm, Begin Preparations, which it was fortunate that we did, because we were able to put about ten feet of fill on top of the existing dike. And had that not been done, we'd had another major flood. But, and we also passed at that time a $50,000 bond issued to pay for it, which we never had to use, because the federal government came in then in the spring of 59. And after that, the flood situation subsided, and the city stayed dry. Then we had already begun the process of interviewing for a city manager. And we made an arrangement with Warren Hyde, who was city manager of the city of Edina. And they had a reputation back at that time, fifty years ago, as being sort of a model city for the city manager form... as being sort of a model city for the city manager form and government. And so he assisted us and helped us through the whole process of everything that had to be done and helped us interview. And, of course, that resulted in then Pat McGarvey becoming our first city manager. So I'll, I'll stop there. As many of you probably know, uh, on Friday, I'll be leaving Chaska. Warren Hyde and I, we're going to be living in Seward, Nebraska, starting next Saturday. And, um, we're, we have two sons, one in Lincoln and one in Seward. And, uh, it's a time in life, uh, that we felt we needed to be closer to the family. So, uh, that'll be a, a big move, made with some regret, yet realizing, um, the benefit that will accrue to us in having family close by when needed. I wanna take this opportunity to thank all of the past city managers. I think that the City of Chaska has been well-served. I think that our, the mayors that succeeded me, aldermen-at-large, have acquitted themselves in a very exemplary manner, as have all the council people that have served our city. You can be very proud of what Chaska has become and that the future that lies before us, I think, is, um, really great. We're, uh, we have a, a very fine community for, uh, people to raise their families, to live in and to enjoy, um, the many amenities that the city provides. So I wanna compliment you, thank you, uh, for all of your efforts on behalf of the citizens of Chaska.
Thank you. Well, that was very well said, Doc. I appreciate that. And, you know, he talks about leaving here. He's lived in the same house for fifty-one years. I mean, think about that. Fifty-one years. That's older than, well, a few of us here. But that's, uh, uh, that's pretty amazing. And I, I think about what you said. You said that you, we had to bond $50,000 and, as you say, raise ten feet of the dike? What would that get us now, Matt? About an inch? Fifty thousand? Maybe an inch of the dike? So, it's amazing, you know, when you think about it, fifty years, fifty years ago, what, what a dollar buys you anymore, so. But thank you for those words. They're very nice and I really appreciate that. Thank you for what you did. I, you had a tough time when that Jonathan started up. That was a big, that was really, there was a step out of the box. And I think that was the beginning of the step out of the box for all the mayors. I think all the mayors, always, somewhere along the line, you took that step that we probably, a lot of cities would have been afraid to take. And I think that that started with, uh, with your, your tenure as mayor by embracing the Jonathan concept, even though I'm sure a lot of people called you a lot of funny names that we probably can't even say anymore. But thank you. But, uh, now that, uh, Mayor Ripke, Mayor Ripke has joined us, um, I do...
Well, it was 7:20.
That was the over and under.
I know. It might sound like a scam, but I was in church.
We did volunteer.
I was saying a couple prayers for everyone.
But I wanna, I wanna give Bob the same opportunity I gave. I wanna read the proclamation for you, Bob.
Sure.
And again, this is a proclamation in recognition of the City of Chaska mayors over the past fifty years. Whereas, the office of the city mayor is a privileged position representing not only the residents... Oops, sorry. Not only, where am I here? Whereas, the position... I better start over. Whereas, the office of the city mayor is a privileged position representing not only the residents of the community that elect them, but the all citizens. Whereas, the position requires individuals who are passionate about public service and who have positive and effective interaction with both government officials and their community. Whereas, it is very rare that a community can look back over fifty years and take pride in the fact that only six mayors have served the city during that time and be able to state that all six individuals still reside within the community. Whereas, the continued residency of the mayors not only shows a sign of community stability, but also a sign of community unity and pride. Whereas, the City of Chaska wishes to recognize six individuals who have served the community so well in the office of the Chaska City Mayor over the past fifty years. Edgar Doc Ziegler, 1968, 1975. Leon Schmidt, 1975 to 1978. Tracy Swanson, 1979 to 1984. Bob Ripke, 1985 to 2002. Gary Van Il, 2003 to 2009. And Mark Windshuttle, 2010 to present. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Windshuttle, Mayor of the City of Chaska, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Chaska, do hereby honor those who have served the citizens of Chaska as mayor over the past fifty years and thank them for their service and dedication to their community. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and the seal of the City of Chaska on the sixteenth day of April in the year of our Lord 2018. Bob, this is for you. I've offered, uh, anyone that likes to maybe share some highlight in their, in their time. And, uh, Doc opened up, but it's kinda open. I know not everybody may wanna speak, so.
Only you guys.
I should go because you'll never stop.
And there are time limits. There are time limits.
I would like to thank you all for asking us here tonight. It's not often that old mayors get any kind of recognition, uh, which is okay. When I served in '78 to '84, I also served for sixteen years as a Carver County Commissioner, representing Chaska after that. So I was sort of connected for a very long time to the city. When I think of highlights, uh, it's hard for me because we didn't have any money at all in those days. And we didn't have a whole lot of projects we could do. We, uh, worked on, uh, Highway 212 because that was for sure gonna come in 1982. Bob Lindahl and I worked on that for a lot of the time. We also opted out of the transit system, which I like to think is kind of the basis for what, uh, a wonderful system that you have today. Par 30 was part of that. And a lot of it was just getting over the, the Jonathan era. Um, and the most important thing, the people that moved into Jonathan have been absolutely wonderful citizens of this community. And I'm saying that because I've been here forever. But it was good. It was nice to see them come. And I think that's probably, uh, what we worked on the most, was to try to engage the old with the new. And that sounds maybe not very important, but it, I think it was. I think it really was. So I would look back on that as, as something that I would treasure.
And, you know, Trace, that, that is very interesting, uh, again, for anybody who doesn't know that I worked in the Public Works Department from '74 to '87. And that was a real common thing. Oh, you're going to work on that Jonathan. You're not gonna be down here working. So that was a big thing, that to try to tie that connection back together was a challenge. And I, I think that there's still some of it out there today. I don't think it's near anything what it was. But I, that truly, I saw firsthand that there were people in the downtown that would get mad if they didn't see the city trucks downtown. They knew that we were up in that Jonathan area, and they didn't like that. So that was, you think about that, that you, in, in this day and age, wouldn't be a big thing. But that was really a big thing. And I, I, like I said, working on that, again, is the start of what made our community what it is because you brought that together. So thank you for that.
Good evening. Sorry, I was a bit tardy.
Hold on, we gotta get our tip board up here. How many word, times the word "community" will come up tonight?
Start counting, right? Um, well, thanks for this. Thanks for bringing us all together and, uh, remembering and reflecting. Sometimes if you think about some of these things and you think about the, the history and, uh, some of those memories, you get, you get a little overwhelmed and maybe a little choked up as you think about some of those things. Because for all of us that serve, you, you do it, I think, everyone here has served for the right reasons. Didn't come with any special agendas other than to, uh, make an already strong, good community better. And, um, those are the memories that I have. And, uh, um, you know, when Doc talks, um, it was probably a much more hands-on approach to governance. Didn't have the staff and, and the resources, uh, to do things. But I'd really be remiss if I didn't recognize, uh, all that work that went into Jonathan and putting all those utilities in the ground, which actually allowed Chaska, for a long time, to attract, uh, business and industry and build that tax base and bring the jobs into our community that allowed so many other projects to occur. And, uh, it's because of that work of Jonathan. You know, the city could go out and offer tremendous opportunities to really good companies to come out here and join what we had in place, which was a number of good companies, and create just a wonderful, strong, uh, industrial and, and business community that has allowed us to invest in so many other good things in the community. So Doc, I don't know if we ever said thanks publicly for your leadership during that time, but, uh, it was your leadership that we're still benefiting from and the courage you had during that time to, to lead the community. So, um, you know, as I think about some highlights and, you know, we worked together, Trace, and I remember you're talking about downtown redevelopment today and, and investing in that important area of our community. And, uh, we started the city square. And Trace, he was the mayor, as we said. You know, that's the symbol of the community. People drive by that and think of the small town. And this is the place you'd wanna live, a place that captures what small town means through that, the symbol of our city square. You were there when, uh, an investment was made to make some changes to that and, and bring that up to, you know, a higher level as a gathering places and, and make that... And it continues to be a special place in our community. And again, I'll turn this over to the other folks. But, but for us, two things I just wanna mention is flood control was a, a, a big project during its time. We weren't out there necessarily sandbagging or adding a couple of feet to the levee, but we were working with the Corps of Engineers. And, uh, uh, it just had to be a project. It was 48 million in total back then, and we had 25% of that cost, which was, back then, still significant. But, uh, I remember in 1965, I came back from Gustavus, and my dad was, just barely made it back when '69 was flooding. And, um, my dad is on the street corner with one of those yardsticks, trying to calculate how fast that water was coming up. You know, and we're gonna, we're gonna have to move and get all the stuff up to the second floor and, and pull up the carpeting. And, "What are you doing? You're trying to calculate how fast this water's coming up?" We know. Look at the truck that's in front of the house. It started on, on dry ground and now it's halfway up the wheels. I think we gotta move here. I think we've gotta pull up the carpeting and go. And, uh, but I remember, um, how the community rallied together for each other. And, um, people didn't know others driving their trucks, moving people out because they know the water was gonna come up and, and flood us, and, and they were just helping each other. I remember standing on the corner and watching, uh, Second and Nash and watching Spurrow Drayson's house. You guys, these nicknames that we have in our town. But, but there's, there's a few of us standing there. And, and the, the house just went, boom. I mean, the basement collapsed.
And the house went like this?
Um, 1965. So, and we were, when the, when the flood control project, the creek diversion channels, got built, Elaine and Eleanor Drayson. Spurrow was gone. Uh, he had passed away. And I remember just, the water was coming up in, uh, what was it, uh, '93? You know, one of the other big floods, '93 was one, and...
'93, 2001.
And we, we saw Eleanor and Elaine downtown and, and just by their house on Second and Nash. And, uh, they were out there, and they're so nervous, and so nervous. They remembered the floods. And, uh, even the, the project was done, at least at this time, maybe it was '97, the project was done. And they didn't believe it would work. They weren't sure. They're so fearful of the water and the flooding. And, uh, and, uh, I saw them maybe a month later. And, you know, the difference it makes in people's lives when they don't live in fear of, of something like that. We talk about it being an asset, wanting to be an asset. Well, it was certainly a threat back then. And, uh, so it was a, an important project. And, and, and you all are, you know, investing in, in downtown, which I think is so important. And it was a project that, you know, provided an opportunity to be able to do that and continue to do that. So, uh, the other thing is just the idea of, of, I was blessed enough to come to, uh, from an organization down at Trim that always thought about its future. And, uh, and, uh, the idea of, at that time, at least, cities didn't do a lot of planning, strategic thinking or planning, and why not? And I think one of the real, uh, kind of things that made a difference for us and allowed us to have a competitive advantage for a number of years was the idea, and still does today, uh, I think, is the idea that you think long-term and you have a plan for the future that guides you. You have goals that you set. And, uh, the effort that has gone in to identify the roles of staff and elected officials, the expectations of each that has ensured that we know the roles. The council doesn't get into details and micromanage and, and, but it has a plan and has a goal and has a vision for the future. And I think that stands the test of time and has been, uh, you know, an important effort that, uh, allows us to always be clear about who we are and where we're going. And, uh, that has stayed in place. And I think you have, um, the commitment to ensure that stays that way and, and, and is a guide. So, uh, like Doc and Tracy, and I just would like to, uh, thank you guys for your service and, and support. And, uh, all the people that we worked with over the years were people that had wonderful relationships and a lot of trust, and it takes courage to put your name out there, uh, to run for any office. And, uh, it does because I heard one person talk about the leadership crisis on the public side because it takes a lot of time. And sometimes, uh, you might feel kicked around because of decisions that are made and that puts a governor on how many people put their name out there. You know, that's the reality of public service, I guess, to some degree. And, but for you that have done that, thanks for demonstrating the courage to be able to do that and, uh, working to make Chaska, you know, the best small town in Minnesota. Thanks a lot.
If they were, um, Bob, in, in my knowledge, Bob's one of the longest-tenured mayors that we've had. And I'm sure in the earlier days, there maybe was longer. But in modern, what I'll call just... And I'm sure in the earlier days, there maybe was longer, but in modern, what I'll call just more modern time, Bob had the longest tenure. So, he's probably seen, a lot of different things happened from, all the way from the fear of flooding to now where there's nothing happening. And again, those are the leadership qualities that, you know, us standing up here now make our lives simpler is the foundation that was set long ago, all the way back to Doc's era. You know, you talk about Doc and the things he's done, but all the infrastructure that went in that people didn't realize is what really developed the industrial parks and who we are today. And that was all done under that stuff. But again, that's that foundation that you guys have all set for us to make our job that much easier. It's never easy, but it's easier when you have a good foundation to work from and you just keep that going. Leon?
Again, I thank you for inviting us, it's quite an honor. I'm not sure anybody here realizes that I was mayor for four years, councilman for eight years, I was the utility superintendent for seventeen years, and I'm a retired fireman for twenty-one years. So, I'm pretty much invested in Chaska in more ways than just being on the city council. One of the things that Luke and I did when I was mayor, as everybody knows, Jonathan kind of went defunct. They owed us a lot of money and we had no money. So, Luke set up a meeting with Mr. White, which at that time, I think, was in charge of HUD in Washington. And Luke and I flew out there and talked to him, said, hey, we need money, we're broke, you're broke. So, we ended up swapping stuff, like the hundred acres where the town course is today. They gave us that. They gave us the par thirty, I think, is that what you call it? We got that, plus some other things, not what we wanted exactly, but it turned out pretty good. Being a mayor, city councilman, has been an honor for me. I've lived here all my life, right across from Doc Ziegler. I hate to see Doc go. He's leaving Friday and after living in the house for fifty-one years, so that's a long time. I basically don't have a great deal to say other than appreciate your having us up here. Thank you.
Gary, you gonna have a few words for us?
Yeah, I got a few words. Oh, I'd really, I'd really like to thank you very much for inviting us here. Tracy said old mayors, I'd rather think of us as former mayors, but, you know. But it's really, it was very much an honor to serve as the mayor of the city of Chaska. And I was on the council for four years before that. And like Peg, I was on the, on the city, on the fire department for twenty years.
By the way, Peg is Leon Schmidt, there's one of those nicknames again. Now, everybody knows that.
What I'd really like to say up here tonight is, you know, I made a mistake a long time ago and I'd just like to correct it tonight. When I was the mayor, we had a very progressive council. And I never, when I was done being the mayor, never got to thank them. So, three of them are still on here. Councilmember Shoals, thank you, councilmember Bow, thank you, and councilmember Rowe, thank you very much. Because we did things and you are still doing things. And that's very, very important to the community of Chaska. Thank you. Couple of things that we accomplished while I was, in my tenure as a mayor was, the first thing was the Pledge of Allegiance. We had brought that up, we had not done the Pledge of Allegiance. And being a veteran, I decided that we should do that. And one council meeting, we just said, everybody stand, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance and you do that now. And I think that's very, very good. But a couple of other things that we happened while I was the mayor is a couple of big projects. One was Highway two twelve. We tried to do some other things. And one thing was on Highway one, on County Road one forty and two twelve, we wanted to have an exit there. And at the time, city administrator Dave Pecorni and I went down to see MinDOT. And we personally knew the leader of MinDOT at that time. And we sat, we came in and we were all loaded for bear, ready to argue our point. And the first thing she said is, you're not getting an interchange at Highway one forty. So, walking, go walking, driving all the way down there, we didn't do so well. But two twelve, somebody told me one time, and you should, you guys should be very proud of that, is that two twelve, they, he said, told me, he said, I'm a family man and I drive down to Minneapolis every day. He said, you gave me an hour a day extra to spend with my family. So, thank you very much for doing that. And another thing that got accomplished while we were working together was the two twelve medical center. And that has really been a great addition to our community. And I can't imagine what we would do without that. I know that we had a hospital close to us that we asked them to do something and they said they were building a big complex across the river. We talked to, if you can believe it or not, one of the things that I believe about communities and maybe life in general is we don't think of the big things. We, our expectations are too small. So, with that in mind, I had, I think it was Matt wrote a letter to the Mayo Clinic telling them, we heard you're doing clinics and we want you to come here and have a clinic in Chaska. It was kind of out of the box thinking because they just came back and just said, no, but, but it maybe
They said it really nice, though. They said it really nice.
Yeah, they did say it really nice. They didn't say, heck, no, they just said, you know. But maybe that drove the Ridgeview Hospitals to put something up here together. So, I think that those are a couple of the things that I think we all should be very proud of, proud of as a community. But again, thank you very much for the honor of being your mayor. I really do appreciate that and thank you for tonight.
Like I said, I don't know what else to say because, like I said, I truly believe that that the foundation that we work off started back then and it just continues to build more off of that. What we'd like to do now, if you guys could just hang around for a little bit, we're gonna listen to the Boy Scouts real quick so that they don't get too late here. And then we're gonna take a short recess and we can take some pictures and do a few things, if that's all right. Can someone take them over to the other room there? And we got some water and a couple treats. And maybe Kevin, yep. Kevin Ringwald, can you introduce Kevin? That Kevin Wright, and they can get a couple pictures there? So, all right. So, we're still back on visitor presentation. So, I'm gonna bring the Boy Scouts up. They have made about four attempts to get here and every time they come, there's a blizzard. So, they missed her by a couple days today, but we're gonna listen to the Boy Scouts tonight. So, I'm not sure what all those shovels mean.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's not because of us, it's, I hope you're talking about snow, but come on up here and share your story. Now, I need you to start off by what troop you are, who's your troop leader, and then your names.
Hello, we're all scouts from Troop one seven four. Our scout leader is Mark LaBaw. He's not here, he's at our other meeting going on at Chronic Glory. So, yeah, I'm Stephen Kirk and I am a star scout.
My name is Ryan Gitzobson, I'm a scout.
My name is John Tierney and I'm a tenderfoot.
All right, what's a shovel for?
Just in case.
Best answer ever.
Think Mr. Kennedy gave it to them.
I'm Aiden Glurtin, I'm a scout.
My name is Kayden Sands and I'm second class.
I'm Grant Walter and I'm a scout.
I'm Chase Nedker, I am a scout.
I am James Larson, I am a tenderfoot.
I'm Gabriel Gibson and I'm second class.
I'm Alexander Kennedy and I'm a life scout.
And the shovels are because we were snowed out at the meeting for the last three times in a row.
All right. And the scout is always prepared, so, very good. You're good? Absolutely. Well, awesome, well, thank you guys for being here and sorry, we did have a little bit of a delay. We had a really important night, I don't know if you got a chance to listen, but we had our past mayors here that have served the city over the last fifty years. So, that was what we're doing, we're sharing some stories. And so, that's what we're doing because we've kind of moved the agenda, we're already past where we should be. But what we're gonna do now is we're gonna take maybe ten-minute recess. We'll come back about eight-ten, eight-twelve so that we can go and just have some conversation and do some pictures with our former mayors. So, and I know it's getting late and if you have to go, you're more than welcome to go. And if you can stay and catch the rest of the meeting, I'll kind of leave it to you and your leaders. So, again, I apologize, but we feel it's important that we do want to visit with our former mayors for a little bit. And again, we're gonna take a recess and we'll be back, say, at eight-twelve, okay? But thank you for joining us. Yes, absolutely, thank you. All right, so we're gonna be in recess for about ten minutes. We're just kind of finishing up. Again, I want to, I want to reach out, former mayors, are you listening back there? Former mayors, they're all deaf. I'm with them. But anyways, again, I want to say thank you to the former mayors that came in and joined us tonight. I think that that's a very special opportunity to Chaska and I think it's a special opportunity for any city to have that ability. And I don't know that a lot of cities have that opportunity to say that we have fifty years of mayor still living and residing in our city.
Well, they all have two things in common. They all live here in Chaska and they all had Luke Melkert.
That is, that is the one interesting thing. Doc Ziegler, I believe, appointed you as the city attorney, is that correct?
In his first year as mayor.
He is nodding. So, in Doc Ziegler's first year, nineteen sixty-eight, he appointed our city attorney, Luke Melkert. And the guy doesn't look a day over thirty, so. Don't know how he doesn't. Yeah. But I just think that that's another interesting
That's what happens when you got a good client, you know, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't age you at all.
There we go. So, but I don't know, anyone else? I've been doing a lot of yapping about the former mayors, a lot of, some of you guys work for other ones.
It's just so special to see, like you say, for all those years of knowledge and guidance and they're still living in Chaska, yeah.
It's fabulous.
Like I say, it's unfortunate that Doc Ziegler is moving away, but like he said, that, you know, he's getting up there in age and he wants to be around his family and his grandchildren and states away makes it, states away make it a little harder. So, and I'm sure, like he had said in his, in his comment, that it still is tough for him as he, as he moves forward with moving on, this coming this Friday. I know he had sold his house, wasn't sure when he was actually going. But again, just, I don't know if I can say it enough, but appreciate those guys for all their efforts and everything you've done. And like Bob talks about, a lot of people can criticize anybody that's sitting up here or anybody in office, but it takes a special person to put their name out there and say, hey, I want to do that. And I open that up to anyone that is willing to run for an office to make sure that you take that opportunity and not say, I wish I did at a later date. So, last call for anyone?
Very good.
If not, we'll go back and see if we can figure out where we are on this agenda.
Number nine.
I've got number nine up on the screen there.
We have been bouncing around here. So, let's get back on track here. Again, we are at item nine, which is adopt ordinance nine forty-five, approving the zoning ordinance amendment for the anti-monotony regulations, city of Chaska.
Mayor and Councilman, the item in front of you tonight is something that basically came out of discussion both with the council and the planning commission, specifically when we were going through detached townhouse development, looking at when does our anti-monotony and when does our, when does anti-monotony apply and when does it not apply? And so, basically, what planning staff has done over the last several months is really go back and look how we more formalize that in place, but same time making sure that we reach out to the development community to get comments back on it to make sure that we think it's feasible for them to be able to implement things that we suggest in here. So, I'll turn it over to Liz. This was heard by the planning commission and recommended from them. Actually, not the last meeting, it was a few meetings ago, January.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. We're looking at a zoning ordinance amendment tonight specifically for the anti-monotony and design requirements that are required in detached, single-family developments. So, to give you a background on this, this policy and standards, they date back before nineteen ninety-eight. And they were basically council-driven to enact in residential developments. Not, but it wasn't until two thousand five that the city council directed us to create more stricter standards within these developments to make sure that the homes and design standards achieve a very articulated and variated development so that there wasn't similar houses right next to each other. So, when new housing developments would come in and they would get rezoned, they would apply or adopt these standards as a part of that. So, tonight, we're basically looking at the formal adoption of this within our zoning ordinance. In the past, it's only been a policy that has been adopted with each PRD's standard. So, we're just looking at this as a whole and adopting it as a part of our overall zoning ordinance to be applied in all new residential developments. So, in specifics, this pertained to the anti-monotony standards, this pertained to three-hundred-sixty-degree architecture and certain garage designs that are promoted within that policy. Since two thousand five up until two thousand thirteen, it did go through some different variations as new housing products came in or other displeasures were noticed in these residential housing developments. So, they've been tweaked kind of over time up until two thousand thirteen. So, we have not seen any changes since that year. So, it was only in December of two thousand seventeen that that question came up of how do detached townhome developments apply to these anti-monotony standards? We've had detached townhome developments come in the past and they have the same appearance throughout. So, it's merely trying to understand when you apply the anti-monotony standards and when you do not. So, staff was asked to look at that a little bit further and provide a differentiation between your traditional between your traditional detached, single-family housing developments and detached townhome developments and where the anti-monotony standards would apply for that. So tonight, that's kind of what we're providing to you is looking at the formal adoption of the anti-monotony standards, but also setting forth a list of exemptions for detached townhome developments that wouldn't use these rules. So specifically, we're looking at a zoning ordinance amendment to section nine of our zoning code and this is where we would implement that new section on anti-monotony and design requirements for detached, single-family residential developments. So specifically, section nine point two-eight is what we're adding to that zoning ordinance. So I wanted to go over kind of the different housing developments that you see in the City of Chaska today. So starting out with kind of your traditional detached, single-family development here shown on the screen. So we've just demarcated a couple different developments that you, or have the detached, single-family traditional development out there. So Fairway Hills and then The Harvest, specifically, D.R. Horton is the builder on those homes. And then we also wanted to show the detached townhome developments that are within the city. So this is where the anti-monotony is not applied. So this is Brickyard Villas and as you can see, all of the exteriors of these homes are the same. Another example is Fairway Court Villas, just next to Fairway Hills. And again, you can see a very similar exterior between those. Another example is just on Tolero Curve and the Cheval Development. And again, they're utilizing kind of that similar look on the exterior. So what we really wanted to use from those detached, single-family townhome developments is see the patterns and similarities that you see in all of those homes. So what we noticed or observed as patterns in the detached townhome developments is that they all had side-loaded garages. They had the exact same number of stories above grade, so mainly single-story, but some might be double-story. They all have yards that are maintained by associations. The front elevations between all the units are basically the same in terms of specific elements. And then the other piece was that they are all physically separated from other detached, single-family developments. So they basically look like they're a part of their own neighborhood there. So along with this, or in conjunction with this, we did engage the coordination with a couple local builders that have done work in the City of Chaska and have utilized our anti-monotony policy in their developments. So that was basically done in January and February of this year where we engaged D.R. Horton, Pulte, and Robert Thomas Holmes to provide a draft anti-monotony ordinance to them. And really, it wasn't anything different than what they've utilized in their past developments, but we wanted to get their feedback from them in terms of how it's going for them, if they see, foresee any changes with the market in terms of the product that they're selling out there. We wanted to make sure we incorporated their feedback into the adoption of this ordinance. So only D.R. Horton and Robert Thomas Holmes provided any feedback back to us. Robert Thomas Holmes basically said that they have way stricter standards in terms of their design standards and anti-monotony, so they didn't have any requested changes to our ordinance because they utilize their own set of standards. D.R. Horton did, however, provide some feedback back to staff in terms of things that could be changed or worked on. So we did sit down with them and kind of go over what they were requesting to change. And we did incorporate some of those changes into the ordinance that you see tonight. So just kind of want to briefly go over what you see in front of you in terms of the ordinance number nine four five. And I do just kind of want to preface by saying that the changes that we're making to the anti-monotony policy and adopting it as a formal ordinance, we are not making any changes that would create more restrictions for builders. In fact, we're making changes that will create more leniency for people that are building within the city. So it basically has three different sections, the intent of the ordinance, the second one being anti-monotony and design requirements. And these are basically the same standards that you see applied today in the newer home developments. So no major changes were done to that with the exception of what was requested by D.R. Horton. So we did change the requirement on the garage protrusion as well as the garage ratio that you see in your ordinance tonight in yellow.
So when we were talking with D.R. Horton, that was on single-family homes.
Correct.
This is just strictly the, the ones that don't, aren't affected by that.
No, this is, this is single-family homes to define it in ordinance, but it's also at the same time, it's, it's also sort of saying, here's the line of the types of detached townhomes when you wouldn't put these in place. So it's really dealing with both.
We were dealing with the detached townhome, but since we were visiting it, we went out to people and said, are there any, anything that's causing you heartburn with the existing piece that we have? And so we just said, let's just make those changes now as well.
Okay, because I, I read it and maybe I got confused over the, the D.R. Horton and, and things like that. One big question I had, and I might have it already answered, is that four-inch wrap. And if I understand it right, it's just a trim around the window?
Right. We require that on all windows.
But why is that such a big heartache? I mean, that's such an easy.
As you, if Liz goes back, you can see that in their existing product.
They already have it?
They already have it.
Yeah. And I think for them, it's mainly an economic thing.
They, they'd like to do less.
Yeah.
But it's really something, it's consistent with what everybody else in the market is building and. I mean, yeah, I mean, any, anything you change or add does cost money, but I think that's one of those elements that from when we started and the council directed us, it was one of those things that you weren't getting. You weren't getting any window wraps and it was looking really plain on the houses. And that was one of the pieces that was causing a lot of consternation up here. And so that, you know, that, that was an area where we said, you know, that, that seems to be successful. We can, we see some of these other issues in terms of the difference between sixty or sixty-five percent. Most people aren't going to be able to see that difference. This is an element that people do notice, you know, that window wrap, whether you have any or a four-inch. A four-inch gives the house just a richer look to it. And if you're putting on window trim, there isn't really a labor cost. It's really just the material difference and, yeah. So, so on that, we just said, at least as staff, we're pretty comfortable with keeping it because I think the look that you're getting, if you go to the.
And like I said, it's.
The houses, I, I think that's an attractive house. And I think that's, at least as what we were hearing is one of the things that you were concerned about originally. And we tried to work with them on all the other structural things that seemed to be causing them difficulties, being a production builder, you know, where there's little tweaks and stuff. So we tried to help them there. Window trim, we just said.
Yeah. The big economic changers for them is things that make them change their floor plates. And, you know, as far as the actual, how do rooms lay out in the house? The other ones become pretty minor costs on, on the.
It is, it is a cost.
Yeah.
But it just seemed, there was a lot of talk on this window wrap and. I'm trying to think if, do we have a picture of, of a, of a house that doesn't have the wrap?
Do you have?
I did not include one.
Do you have the previous ones, Liz? But the shutters, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, no, but I was just curious if you had something.
Did you load up the?
Well, I have.
It's fine. I was more of showing other people what we're talking about.
Show, show that up on the overhead.
It's a very small picture, so I don't know how clear it's going to be.
Oh, yeah, I can see. It's not going to be that one that we had that night where it looked like we couldn't focus.
Hopefully not.
Okay, good. Oh, shit, yeah, I can see it already.
Yeah, that's terrible.
It's, just to point out, when that development came through, I remember the meeting after that. That's, that's when the push really came for anti-monotony rules.
Oh, I mean, push the.
That was back in two thousand four, two thousand five.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There you go, Liz, right there. Just center it.
So what we're talking about is, is again.
The, the upper right one.
Upper right.
Really is showing.
You can see, you can just barely see the window and you can just see in the bottom corner there. And I'm not, I can't tell if that has a wrap on that, of course, on the left does.
Oh, those do.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's just about, and it's.
So you can see on this one, this was kind of in our beginning anti-monotony and you had issues with side-loaded or corner lots that didn't have windows and trim and things like that. And also double-frontage lots where you just had the back and the front might have looked nice, but the rear of it, which faced out to the public street as well.
To the major road, yeah.
Was not addressed properly from your perspective. And so those were changes and those are changes we've left in the ordinance.
I think that's a good.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
One, I think the, the big thing that that particular development pointed out is when you have a very, I mean, that's a busy road. That's Pioneer Trail. And when you have houses backing out into there, it does matter what the whole house looks like.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't even know what that council was thinking.
I don't either, but.
I don't know, let's ask them. What are you, what are you thinking? Now that I see it, I'm wondering what I.
I do specifically remember, though, I used to sit in Nate's seat and I remember a council member or doctor sitting there. And I remember he caught it right away and it, it started the whole discussion on anti-monotony.
Yeah.
It's a big difference.
Yeah, and so, so going to that four-inch really does make a difference on the homes. And, and it does add costs to the homes, but I think in the balance, at least from our perspective, it's, it's a, it's worthy to pursue that because of just the community standard and the community look that you get.
It just looks so much better.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice job. All right, sorry to get you off track.
Thanks for showing that.
Yeah, no worries.
The third section of this new ordinance talks about the exemptions or the list of exemptions for those detached townhome developments. So if they met all the criteria that are listed within A through F here, they would be exempt from the anti-monotony and design standard ordinance. So that kind of gets back to those similarities that we saw in the existing detached townhome developments that you see today. So we just basically utilize those elements and kind of put that into a code form in terms of these detached townhomes. If they had all this criteria, they would be exempt from those listed standards, anti-monotony standards. So we did give another pass back to the builders that we engaged before on our final draft ordinance for the anti-monotony and design standards for housing developments. So that was done just recently here, so we shared that with them. And all of them were pretty much good to go, except for D.R. Horton, who did reference a couple other changes that they wanted to make, which was provided as a supplement in your packet for council tonight. And that, again, goes back to the four-inch window wrap and three hundred sixty-degree architecture. But I think, like we said, it's one of those pieces where we feel that it is necessary and worthwhile to keep in the ordinance.
If it's not visible to the public, it's not that big a deal, but all of a sudden, when you have things that front up to a public right of way, it makes a difference in the community.
Mm-hmm, right.
And so the three sixty-degree architecture then only applies to where those happen? If you were.
Yeah, it's like corner lots and.
Double frontage.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, some builders choose to just then put that on all of them just because it's easier for them to maintain and figure out. But our requirement would only on corner lots, double frontage, basically are the.
Anything that's highly exposed.
Okay.
So in conclusion, we are asking you to make a motion to adopt ordinance number nine four five, which would be approving the zoning ordinance amendment for those anti-monotony regulations and design requirements for detached, single-family residential developments. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those for you.
It's great. I don't think so. I think, I think it was something that we talked about that we wanted to revisit and especially after, you know, the conversation with D.R. Horton the first time around when they were concerned about some things. But I think we made some, you know, we did some changes and I think that's, we have to do that. We have to go back periodically and make sure that we're not doing something that's not what the rest of the world's doing today. So I think it's good for all of us to take, take a step back and take a look and make sure that we're good. And obviously, we found a couple of things to tweak and, and that's, that's a good thing about doing that.
To me, it says a lot too that, for instance, like Robert Thomas Holmes comes back and said, we don't care, our standards are higher. But also that even with D.R. Horton, if you look at the house, they have really nice houses in town and you look at what they've done and they've, they've incorporated all of this. So it's, it's not something that's new to them and they look great.
Right, right. So, all right.
So I do have one question, though. It's great and I like it and I think it's necessary, but nine point two eight point three, when you showed that slide, number C, does that mean that, that we would allow associations to dictate if all houses had to look the same? In, in a given association, is that, is that what I'm reading this to be?
So it basically limits people from changing their exteriors after going through the planning process.
Oh, okay, so it's.
It's after the planning process.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Okay, thank you. That's what I needed.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Approval on resolution nine forty-five.
Ordinance, excuse me.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Rowe, second by Councilmember Bowe, to adopt ordinance nine forty-five, approving zoning ordinance amendment to the anti-monotony regulations. Discussion. I agree pretty well.
It's good.
Pretty well took care of that. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. We are moving to item number ten, approve park board's recommendation to rename former Veterans Park.
Mayor, Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight, just a little history on this. So back in September of two thousand fifteen, we, the council did pass a motion to move Veterans Park. Bye, guys.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate you guys all going. See ya.
Yeah, thank you.
You need anything signed to say you were here? Okay.
Okay.
Hey, you take that picture up here in the mayor's chair and show that to your girlfriend tomorrow.
There you go.
He says, okay.
What's her name?
All right, thanks for being here, guys. All right, sorry, Matt.
So back in September of two thousand fifteen, a decision was made to move Veterans Park down here. And at the time, there was a discussion about swapping the two names, but as we went through the Veterans Park Task Force process, it was recommended in that process that Schimmelfeg name be used more was something that's associated with a school in the future since he had a, a big connection to the school board. And so a process then was, was made to rename former Veterans Park. The recommendation in front of you tonight is coming after going through the latest iteration of the, the process. The, at the April ninth meeting, the park board did look at the names, the list of names recommended for that and did recommend to the council that the park be renamed Sunset Park.
Just kidding.
I don't want to hear that.
Just kidding. I really wanted Freeway Park, but this.
Freeway?
We're not doing this again.
All right, let's hurry up.
Yeah, so, so a park board recommendation is to move forward with the park being renamed as Sunset Park. This does allow us to start advertising that, especially as we're getting into baseball season here with teams coming in. So we do recommend approving that.
Does, does somehow does that, how do we, this is probably a question way smarter than I can answer.
Kevin Job.
How does that go to, so it goes into like the Google Maps and all that stuff?
That's why we have Kevin.
Okay, well, and the only reason I say that is we're going to baseball season. All of a sudden, it comes up Sunset Park and nobody has a clue where it is. And you can't go anywhere, you can't go to a gas station now and ask where a park is because they don't know. I mean, it's just different back fifty years.
And we'll have maps on our city's website as well, I'm sure.
Yeah, I've, I've actually submitted things to Google in the past on their maps to suggest that changes be made and they're very responsive to that.
They are, much better than they used to be.
I, I didn't know how to do it, so, all right. Any, you know, any further discussion, now that we're disappointed in the name, but. Any, you know, any further discussion, now that we're disappointed in the name, but.
No, we're good to go.
No, this, and it makes sense, it's toward the western side of town. But it does bring up a question and that is timing for Schimmelfeg at some point in the future.
Well, we've purchased the land.
Okay.
To me, that, the timing on, so it's, the park is, is the township park or.
Community park.
Community park out in southwest Chaska. So we have fifty-five acres that we purchased. To me, the development of that park is going to be completely determined on when is the collector road going in. Now, I can tell you that I've seen a couple of presentations from the school district recently that shows that all their new elementary schools are already full. And so, so I don't think we're as far away from that as you think we might be.
Sure.
So, you know, I don't know exactly when that's going to be, but it could be in the next five years, within this five-year period, that, that there's a planning process going on for that park.
Very good.
And the Miracle Field?
That's part of the, yeah, yeah.
That's what I thought, but I'm not sure.
All right, any further discussion of not entertaining motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to approve the Park Board's recommendation to rename former Veterans Park Sunset Park. Discussion.
Thanks, the Park Board and all the residents have shared ideas and suggestions for the park name.
I, I like the process. I think it was, it was a nice way to do that. You know, everybody kind of threw names in and at the top, whatever the number was, Rose, you know, kind of came to the top and then I think it was a good way to do it. I think it helps us for the future. You know, no one ever knew that naming a park was one of the harder things in life to do.
It's true.
It's, it's not easy. So thank you to our Park Board for.
There's a reason that the Chaska Town Course is called the Chaska Town Course and why the Chaska Par Thirty is called the Chaska Par Thirty.
They were dumb names in the beginning and they're best names ever right now. Because we don't have to worry about that.
The sooner the better.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries, moves us to item number eleven. Approve official host city proposal for the twenty eighteen Curling Night in America.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm really excited about this one. So just this past week, we did have the CEO of USA Curling as well as people from the World Curling Federation and, and production company for NBC come and visit us to basically make a proposal to have the Chaska Curling Center be the two thousand eighteen host of the Curling Night in America. If you haven't watched this, go to a bar any Friday night during the, during the, anywhere from October through like March and you'll see Curling Night in America on Friday nights. Their demographics are right in sort of that mid twenties to about fifty years old and they had about two point one million viewers that occurred with it. It's a big deal for, for us to, to be able to, you know, be offered this. In essence, what it is, is it's a four nation made-for-TV competition that features men's, women's, and mixed doubles play. This would be the fourth season that they had. They had it at the Masabi Curling Club, the Duluth Curling Club. And then they had it in Omaha last year because that's where the Olympic Trials were for, for it. And it's really next to the Olympic Trials. It's probably the biggest event we could host at, at the Curling Center. So it's a huge honor for us to be able to, to get this. The proposal that you see in front of you tonight is a letter of intent that basically sort of talks about how the, the, how it would run. They basically tape it over a three-day period in the middle of August. Still nailing down dates, but we'll be getting those soon. There takes about two to three days for setup, a couple of days afterwards. So we basically have about a week that we take it out of production. But they basically go through and do all the, the matches at that time, tape them, and then they get played October through December. And then in the wintertime, they get replayed again. So there's nine episodes. I think they get played eighteen times over the course of, of the year. Again, it's, it's become a very popular program for NBC on their NBC Sports Channel. The proposal estimates that the cost for us would be fifty thousand dollars. However, we anticipate that a lot of that we can actually do through in-kind services that we can provide during the, during putting together the production of it. Staff is recommending that we move forward with entering into the letter of intent or proposal for the, this and certainly can answer any questions, but we'd recommend moving forward with it.
Yeah. Is this something we wouldn't have got if we didn't belong to that association that we just joined? We wouldn't have gotten it?
No. I, you know, we joined USA Curling, I mentioned to you in the budget this year that that was one of the things we budgeted. And I think that was the last piece of the puzzle.
Yep.
It, once we joined USA Curling, they clearly see how, what a quality facility we have here. And I think that just gave them the ability to come in and make the proposal.
Good, great.
Yeah.
And this airs into how many?
Airs worldwide. So, yeah, so it's NBC Sports Channel. So they're the ones that did all the Olympic curling that was on. No, it's, it's, it'll bring, if you didn't see, the USA men's gold medal team was down at our Curling Center last week. And they will be likely the team that plays in this along with the women's team. And then there's a mixed four-person team and a mixed doubles, which is a new format that they had in this year's Olympics.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Cool. Very good.
Awesome. Anyone?
No. I'll make that motion.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Bowe. Second by Councilmember Schultz. Our curlers.
Right around, yep.
To approve the official host proposal, twenty eighteen Curling Night in America. Discussion.
One, one suggestion, Matt, I've been told that they have, when they fade in and out from commercials and two commercials, they'll show video from the community that's, you know, the host city. We should make sure that we get some nice videos from the Fire and Ice and the fireworks and the music.
That's, there's another Kevin, Kevin job back there. So.
Who did we point to when Kevin wasn't here?
One of the, one of the advantages we have is he dealt with a lot of this with the PGA, so.
Oh, that's right.
So.
And the Super Bowl?
And the Super Bowl, so.
Maybe he's got some footage from Ryder Cup he can use too.
Well, and I think what you'll see is that they're going to send a production company out to be able to do some of the pre-footage.
Good.
One of the things that they promote with this is that in sort of those fade-in, fade-outs to the competition, they want to really highlight the community. So they'll be highlighting different aspects of the, the Chaska community and that's, we're going to have Kevin meet with them to basically sort of identify what are the things that, that we want to focus on and really help sort of create that message that goes out. But the other thing is, and this seems small, but it ends up being a pretty big deal is, so every match, there's the NBC Curling Night in America logo that's on the ice, but it has Chaska on there. Well, every time they go up and down the ice, they have the, the aerial cameras that hit that. So they estimate for every episode, I think they said there's like ten minutes of exposure of that symbol, which is pretty, you know, you think about, people have a pretty short attention span. Ten minutes is actually quite a long time. So, so it does create some real publicity, not only for the Curling Center, but the community as well.
Great.
Excellent.
This is fabulous.
Fantastic.
All right, so I have a motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries bills, anyone?
Motion to approve the bills?
Motion by Councilmember Geisler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rowe to pay the bills. Discussion. Hearing none, Nate, call Rowe.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Geisler?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell?
Yes. Other business, let's start with Councilmember Schultz.
I don't have anything for you, sir.
Councilmember Bowe?
I think last time I mentioned that we had moved into the new house. So we, we've stayed within Ward Two, but purchased a new, smaller house. Secondly, I've, over the years, I've been called a lot of things, but now I officially get to be called grandpa too because we have our first grandchild born.
Congratulations.
On Friday of last week in Chicago, but we're hoping they'll move back to Chaska without too long, without too much delay. So very excited. So let me think about this. Alice Berlin Bowe.
Awesome.
Is, is our first grandchild. We're very excited about that.
Awesome, congrats.
Thank you. And third, I've had a few people mention to me that after the last snow, obviously, big snow and, and not expected in April, but there's still quite a bit of slush on some of the roads and there's a concern that it'll get frozen during refreeze at night. And what's the city's policy on trying to get that off versus just letting it melt over the next few days?
I know Brian was talking about it. There's a couple areas. We specifically run into areas sometimes when people are parking on the road and have to, to go out around and then they move and it's left there. If it's a particularly bad area, they'll go back and actually do it. They'll do it during the day when it's melted a little bit and get it, can get it out. But if you have any specific concerns that are out there, just let me know.
I've had a couple communicated, so I'll share them with you.
Yeah, just, you know, just send me an email or whatever and, and we can make sure if it's not on the list that we put it on there.
He also brought up to me that they were going to come back down through my neighborhood, our neighborhood, just because he knew it was bad in the center on those streets. But he said, we had to get certain things open and then we'll come back and hit the, hit the spots that we couldn't hit twice. So.
Cruisers are all in snow tonight, so.
Yep.
There's not going to be many people around tomorrow, so I think Brian and Scott.
That's what I was saying.
Okay.
Are going to go out and pick ups and just kind of look for spots. They were all a little bit today, he said.
Yeah.
They put in some horrendous hours.
They sure have. And, and a big kudos to today over lunch I had was out and about. And I happened to see a plow coming by and, and they stopped and actually helped a resident get out of their spot that was snowed in so, so they could help that car get out of the way so then they could plow that spot. So I thought, boy, that's great service that you won't get in a big city.
No.
But here in the best small town in Minnesota, it happens routinely, which is good to see.
Just as a note, they, so we've had so much snow, they sort of ran out of dry space to be able to put it. And so one of the things, just so people are aware, this last snowstorm where the old fire department pad is, sort of by Cuzzi's.
Yeah.
That corner is going to be used for piling snow from this storm. We're keeping it out there because there is a development group that's working on, on developing that centerpiece of the Chaska Building Center site. So they're doing some of their soils tests. So stay up in the corner. But we just didn't have any real options because Athletic Park was way too wet.
Oh.
And way too much to, to get it down there.
Not any room hardly to put it anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And actually, I think they moved that over to now where the, they got to do soil boarding on the other part of the site.
He said he was out with the owner, people, I shouldn't say the owner, the people who are actually developing the site today and just told them, asked them, if you had your druthers, where would you have us put it? And he said, right there. And he said, that's where we're putting it.
You have concrete pads and everything depending on.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
And, you know, and then he luck and handshake, this should be gone and.
Yeah.
Relatively quick. I hope, not too quick.
We want a slow melt.
Next week sixty, so it's going to.
I know.
After the five inches of snow on Wednesday.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I heard two to four and now it's five.
It's going to be rain, Matt.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. Just one thing, Matt, I know I talked a little bit about this, but I had some questions on our CSO, you know, community service officers. As you know, the entire time I've been up here, I've been a big proponent, you know, for our great police department.
Yeah.
And, and I think though, with the things that we've got going on in the community, I think it may be time to look at additional CSOs.
Yeah.
And then lastly, you know, as, as you and I talked, you brought up a good, great idea was, you know, one of the things in our community, we really don't have the ability to bring, you know, new officers in here. You know, I would say least tendered officers into the Chaska Police Department. And so generally, they have to go other, to other departments to get their training and then, you know, eventually maybe come back and apply. And so I kind of looked at this and thought, well, you know, this might be a great opportunity for, you know, recent grads and people like that that, that would like to come and, and do their training in Chaska or, you know, kind of get that, I should say, not training, but their experience in Chaska, you know, to move to a full, you know, position as an officer. It, it might kind of accomplish a couple of different goals there, so.
Yeah, we, so, well, first of all, we've used our CSO program in the past for being sort of, is training ground the right word? I'll ask Julie if that's the right terminology. But in essence, to, to be able to take people who have come out of school with their skills and ready to be employed, to be able to get them out into the field and be able to really get sort of a couple of years of experience under their belt so that when we do get to a point when we have either a position open up because of attrition or because of, you know, we're adding a new officer, it becomes somebody that we've already had in our department for a couple of years and we can see how they perform. And so we actually have, I think I counted five. So we have Mike Kleiber, you didn't even think back that far, did you? So we have five officers.
Jamie Personias.
Jamie Personias.
Kyle Hans, Martine.
Martine.
Martine. And then there's one other too. We have five officers that have actually gone through that where they've been a CSO for a couple of years and then when the positions have opened up, you know, then they've been a fantastic candidate to be able to bring in. We just went through a process now for hiring officer and we had, we had some really good top candidates that, that came through that process. You know, our challenge now is that we don't really have positions that are open as CSOs. But as I was mentioning at the Councilmember Rowe, we've, we've recently really, I think, experienced a lot more of the code compliance type of issues that become an issue that we don't have the staff to be able to really go out and effectively address. And so it's not that there isn't a need for something that's out there. There certainly is and, you know, it's great when we come out of these processes if we're able to look at how do we bring people into those positions and be able to, you know, train sort of our future within our department. So, you know, the question that come is, do we have the ability within our department to do it now? We don't currently have something budgeted, but I, I did go back and, and look at, you know, sort of where we're at as far as what we budgeted this year and then going into next year. We actually had two positions that we budgeted for in our fire department, fire inspectors, which is also getting the code compliance issues as well that'll come on likely at the end of May. So we have, we actually have dollars, enough dollars to that to be able to look at, you know, you know, do we come out of this police hiring process and look at the future? We'd actually have some dollars to do that and would be able to, you know, look at how we'd be able to, you know, accomplish moving those positions into the, the future years. I would suggest if that's something that the council wants me to, to take a look at further that I'd basically put together some kind of a memo or something to you guys to basically sort of look at, you know, what, you know, what needs we have out there in, in the department. Are these things that the council has as a priority? You know, is it something that, you know, we're, we want to prioritize and look at more in the future and in different ways that we could do that? So if that's something the council would like me to do, I certainly can put together some kind of more formal analysis and bring it back to you guys for something to consider.
I'd really like to see more CSO positions available, which can take some of the pressure off the officers that are working those shifts to allow them to go to higher level calls and let the CSOs then do more of the, the code enforcement. Because I think some of that gets, has to fall behind because they're going to higher level calls. So I can really see budgeting that, but you also don't want to lose someone who's really good. You know, we'd like to keep them maybe if we had that opportunity available, they wouldn't leave and go to another community.
It's a great way to gather that experience and stay here.
Yeah.
But I, I think that, you know, you talked a little bit, but I think that it's more common for someone to come out of school and go become a CSO than to come right out of school and, and become an officer. I would probably.
That fair, Julie?
That, that I.
Julie came out and went straight to sergeant, though.
So, you know, if, if, you know, I, I do worry that at some point, people are going to say, I don't want to be a police officer with all the craziness going on in the world.
Yeah.
That it's very important that we make sure that we keep the good ones here because I think good officers will be a premium wherever they want to go. And I, I think it's important that we keep that, our stock that we see important as is here.
Well, the other factor is too, the population is growing here. We've had so many new neighborhoods open up, but yet we haven't increased the staff.
One of the, one of the things.
We're living it.
Yeah, I.
The population that we have?
Yeah, I think.
You said we were short.
No, no.
No, from an officer, from an officer position, I think we're really sort of staffed properly.
Yeah, this is just CSOs.
CSO.
Where we've really been, I think, understaffed is in the. Where we've really been, I think, understaffed is in the code compliance, community service, the support staff there. And it really struck me last week when we were having a conversation about some problem properties I think everybody knows about, that we've dealt with before, and we had our fire chief that had to go up to the door and individually, and I think about all the big issues that he's dealing with and position trying to lead the department, and that's a big investment we have going out individually to, to deal with these, and I would sort of argue not a real systematic type of basis, that it's, it's sort of, we do things as we have time to do them. So this gets back to the larger discussion, I think, that we had during the retreat last year about there's different areas that we have seen, I think, a real lack of staffing to be able to address some of the things that I've heard come up more as far as questions. I think the only thing that distinguishes this is we just went through a hiring process and, you know, we potentially have some opportunities that are there that maybe wouldn't exist in the future. So if it's something, like I said, if it's something that you guys think is worthwhile for, for me to put a little bit more thought into and, and put down in writing and be able to get to you guys to noodle about, I certainly could do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, speaking for myself, I think yes. I'd like to see that, and I think, you know, to the mayor's point, you know, if we've got some of these candidate, you know what I mean, we don't want them to slip away right now, so I don't know, you know, how, you know, if the budgeted dollars are there and stuff and the, and the formulas work, you know, how quickly we can move that.
Well, I can do the analysis pretty quickly.
Okay. And then does that take the council or is it just a budget?
So basically, when we do things mid-year like this, it'd be a budget amendment. So it'd basically be looking at amending the budget. Now, in this particular case for this year, we'd be able to basically just shift dollars from something we already had budgeted that we didn't use over. To me, the bigger issue becomes looking into the future. Because, you know, it's not a one-time cost, it's an, it's an ongoing cost that goes into the future, and I have some thoughts about that. And I've had some thoughts just in general about, you know, not just the police department, but other departments that were running into similar issues. And this is, just so you guys know, this is something that we plan on being the topic that comes back at this year's retreat. And so last year, we sort of generally talked about how this is sort of an issue that, that is, you know, exists and has developed over time. And I think everybody said, yeah, this is something we should look at further. So we're actually in the process of doing a staffing study now, which is basically, I'll call it a gap analysis. So it's really looking at where are we at now, and it's not, and where we need to be in the future. It's not saying you need to go from here to here in one year. I mean, that's just, it's not economically feasible to do that. But it is saying, how, it's sort of like our CIP plan, how do you come up with a deliberate way to be able to plan for the future so that you don't get yourself so far behind in the future that, that you're not able to really address the services that you want to? So we're gonna be, that staffing study is gonna be coming back and be sort of the focal point of the retreat this summer, and this would've been one of them certainly that would've popped up.
Do we have any dates for that yet?
No, because we need to finish that, and the other thing that we're gonna bring back is sort of the results of the, we're doing the decision resources survey. So there's, to me, there's two issues. There's what, what do we see from a service level perspective that we think we need to provide for staff? But there's also our residents' perception of how well we're doing with services to begin with. I mean, if there's areas that they view as an issue, whether we think it's an issue or not, perception's sort of reality, and so we need to be able to look at, are there, are there ways that, or things that our residents look at that they view as priorities that maybe we aren't putting as high a priority on? I think it's really important for us to look at both of those, to get not just a perspective as you as council or us as staff, but also understand what are our residents saying? So those are the two pieces we need to finish. If I had to guess, it's gonna be somewhere in that July timeframe.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Easter?
Well, I was gonna congratulate Grandpa Bo.
Thank you.
And I wanted to wish Matt a late happy birthday.
Thank you.
His birthday last week.
Last Thursday.
Happy birthday.
You finally thirty?
Yeah, I wish.
Twenty-nine whole. And then the shade tree program that the city offers, they're not gonna do a fall program, so we had the spring program, and it has been officially extended to this coming Friday, the twentieth, but now I'm wondering with all this extra snow, how they, how they're gonna balance that. Now, it won't be immediate delivery, people can still order the trees, and it would be at a planting period determined down the road.
We could ask Brian that and then get something out on, on Facebook then, too.
So I did update places I had it to be this coming Friday, but then with the potential snow coming, and I know people have asked, and it wasn't in the description, about what about delivery? Can we hold off? Well, obviously, they wanna be able to dig the hole and the frost isn't gone yet, so, yeah, so we need to know more about that. And let's see, Christmas in May, that's coming along good?
Yep, May fifth is the date for Christmas in May. We have four homes that the group as a whole is gonna work on on that day. And then there's one home that Southwest Christian students are working on actually next Friday, that just worked out better for their schedule, and it's not one that we need a ton of, of support on, and they do a service day each year, and so we're putting on, them on a project next Friday. But we have two single-family homes, two mobile homes, and quite a bit of work to do, so a lot of painting.
Luke?
Got the shirt for it.
And anybody who has been a runner in the past, and if you're interested, willing to do it again, please just drop me a note and, and we'll make sure to get you on the schedules, so.
And also, I saw that spring cleanup has been scheduled for May fifth.
So that's the same day as the...
Yeah, it's been the same day for a number of, of years. It actually works well for us for Christmas in May because we have a lot of stuff that we haul and we bring it down there, so.
So it should be still okay for that with all the snow and the wet?
If it isn't okay, we won't be doing Christmas in May either.
But I thought trucks going in and out of the ballpark, you know?
It should be okay by then. I mean, it's, it's looking like the temperatures getting...
It might look like Christmas yet, then.
Good.
It might look like Christmas, but we know.
That's true.
Has there ever been concern when you double up on the day that someone who would wanna volunteer, but instead they're gonna be working and hauling their own stuff, or...
There's been some concern, but I, you know, it's been concern at the board level that we've talked about it, but I've never had somebody come up to me and say, that's a real issue. It actually works really well for us for Christmas in May.
Absolutely. And I've never seen the gymnasium empty for lack of volunteers when we're starting out, it's very crowded, so.
And I have seen people where they, you know, we go from eight to two with the spring cleanup, and so I've seen some people just sort of get their own stuff done and then come down.
Okay. Very good.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Matt?
Nope.
Luke? Thanks for pushing us to get that mayor's...
Yeah, that was a really good idea.
That was fabulous. Very good.
Capture history.
You know, I knew Doc at his house for sale, but I didn't realize he was, you know, going in, so appreciate that.
Your input on, on making sure we get none, and staff who all did that and getting the treats and errors, I think, just made it a little more special. You know, it was late, they didn't wanna stick around long, but just to have the opportunity that they could, so thanks for that.
I thought Denise did a good job when I had...
Proclamation.
It was very nice.
Her and Sue Prather did that together, so.
Very nice.
Pass that on for us.
Yep.
Kevin, anything? Nate?
Nothing.
Okay. Liz, you got anything? Good?
Just a couple things. Obviously, we know we're getting Ryder Cup back, there was a kickoff meeting last week that a number of us were at. That was very exciting that they tied the curling, I think we hit on that, but having the opportunity to hold and wear a gold medal is probably a once-in-a-lifetime thing. I thought that the, the group of curlers were so generous and gracious about letting people take photos with it, hold it.
They just pulled out of their pocket.
Yeah, it was, John Schuster gave me his medal and walked away, I was scared to death with it, you know? You know, and then finally, some other guy said, I'll get it back to him, you know, because he was way over.
Yeah, I'll take it.
He probably thought it was pretty safe. You had the police chief next to you, so he was probably...
So, but anyways, I, I thought it was, I had no idea going into how, what they were gonna do, but I thought it was really neat how they tied, you know, with the curling and, you know, to that with the Ryder Cup, so I thought that was pretty cool, so fun to be at. I, I was reading that they're gonna take our dome down, not our dome, the school district dome down this week. It was scheduled for today, but it's moved to Thursday, and, but I heard it's gotta be dry, so I don't know how that's gonna work with all that, but anyways, so...
I think the water nature didn't take it down.
Yeah, Vandis Heights did go down.
Somebody, yeah, Vandis Heights, so the good thing is our survived the snowmageddon and someone else's didn't, but it will be going down soon. I know there's a lot of people disappointed possibly about that, that they're saying, you know, now's the time we need it, but...
Just as a note about that, I, I had an email conversation with the superintendent about that. They're really shooting, you know, this year, they weren't able to open it up until December because they had some construction delays and stuff like that. Their goal is really to go from November first to May first. And the reason that they were having to go down a little bit earlier now is because they sort of got the bottom of the barrel for times for the crew to come and take it down for them, and these crews go across the country, and they, if you don't get them now, you don't get them till July. And so they had scheduled this back in, in December when they were out to put up the dome. So in the future, their, their goal is to have November first to May first and keep that on that, that timeline.
Okay, so, well, that makes a little more sense, 'cause I, I wanted to, that was a question I was gonna ask you, is I wanted to make sure that it wasn't us doing it with the six-month thing.
We wanted to make sure that, too. That was sort of the way it came across at first.
Well, and that's, it didn't say that, but I could see where people would lean that way. Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, so it was, it was mainly due to their crews.
Okay, awesome. And then again, I just wanna touch on night, tonight I thought was, even as exciting as going to the Ryder Cup thing, I thought it was pretty neat to have those guys here and to share their stories. I didn't know, and I told them that I wanted them to all come up and try to share something. They didn't wanna come on camera, they go, yeah, that's the way it goes, but I thought they all did an awesome job of sharing, sharing what they did, so thanks to those guys, and this is our last opportunity with Doc moving away, that, you know, and...
You know, they all kinda stepped up and talked and shared, but you didn't say a word.
But what?
You didn't share.
What are your accomplishments?
He gets to come back in twenty years and do it.
I don't know. Anyways, moving right on. I, I think I share, I'm fortunate, I mean, I, I still believe that those guys set the foundation. You know, I came in from a different background, I didn't have any counsel, you know, quite honestly, I was scared as HE double-toothpicks. You know, I didn't know what to expect, and my goal was is not to, not to tip the ship over, you know, and to keep it right and keep it going straight, and I've been fortunate. I've had great people that have helped me that, when I didn't know what I was doing, and that, that we've been able to continue moving forward, and I think we're, we've probably kicked her up a notch again, and I talked about it with the other council or with the other mayors, that, you know, this city has stepped out of the box more than a lot of other cities have done about taking chances and taking things, and, you know, we're all sitting here, we know, we took the chance on the fireman's park, and we talked about another success story out of it tonight. So we've been, I've been able to be part of that, but I, I still think that, as I look at, in, in my ninth year as a mayor, is one of the biggest things that we're doing is fixing our infrastructure, is so important, and it's the things that nobody sees, well, they do see the streetscaping, but they don't see all the things that get repaired and everything gets upgraded underneath the ground, and I still think that that, as a council, is our shining moment, I really do. I think that that's, it's really easy to keep putting that stuff off, and, and granted, I mean, you know, the flood control diversion project, it was huge, and you had to do that, and the amount of effort that went into that, there wasn't time to be putting all these other things out there, and it was our turn, and I think that that is really is, is a kind of a, to me, is a big deal. As a guy that, that worked on some of these old crappy streets and you hated patching them because you patch them and tomorrow you come back and there'd be a new one a foot away, and those are the same streets that were fixed here this year that I did thirty-some years ago. So I look at it that, that that's, but I, we got a ton of moments, we got the Ryder Cup, you know, and now we got a Ryder Cup back, and I don't know, the list just keeps kinda going on and on and on, so.
To me, looking from the outside, Ann, the common thread that you saw between each one of the mayors and the councils that they worked on was that notion about having those goals on the big things that the envisioned for what the, the committee wanted to accomplish, and what are those big goals they're gonna work on? And that doesn't mean that people don't disagree and that there aren't, you know, people view that there isn't, you know, ways that you do things different, or on some of the, you know, day-to-day things that come up that people, you know, don't disagree, but on those big things that each of those councils from nineteen sixty-eight forward focused on is to say, what are the absolute most critical things that we're gonna work on? And as a team, we're gonna work on them together. And to me, that's, when you look at other cities and some of the issues that they've run into, it's because they haven't agreed on that. And that's sort of the bread and butter of what makes a council effective or not.
I also think some of the long-term service keeps that stability to go from year to year to keep those projects moving and that, that goal becoming a reality.
But if you kinda heard the common thread there, too, is, is that all of them, not only were they mayor or council members, but they were, they were firefighters. Leon worked for utilities, Tracy was the county commissioner, that it's, it was, there was city time there.
More than just being mayor.
In the council, but there was a whole bunch more that, that there is along with the mayor position, so. I, I just really thought this is, I, I wish we could've had another hour with them, you know? And, and really have that opportunity to sit down and have that, you know, the short recess we took, you know, it was funny, they started opening up and started telling some of the stories, so it's, and it's cool. And for me, a guy that's grown up here, you know, for a good share of my life, you know, a lot of the stories they talk about, I do remember them, you know, like they were yesterday, so.
Have we ever asked any of the former mayors to maybe just sit down and write some of those memories down, just some of the notes as while it's still there and put it into some sort of historical binder?
Well, Tracy's like the big historical, she should be interviewing everybody.
I would just love that. And even if it was a, an electronic interview before...
Well, maybe this is something that spurs that along.
It's the thing, what you do is you sit down with a video camera and just video it, and then at another time, you have someone write it, because if you said, you know, Tracy, will you write it, she, Tracy probably would, but maybe Leon or Gary might, would say, nah, or me even, nah.
I really think videotaping...
Somebody videoed, somebody else writes it. And you gotta have a group because it kinda starts feeding off each other, so, but...
I'd sure like to see that before the first...
Kevin's getting intimidated over their battle of the work we're putting on his plate. Well, Kevin can do that.
Yeah.
He's ready.
Kevin, the other Kevin's service, he's hunkering down there.
He was already taking notes, he was already taking notes.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep this going, but thank you for, for asking about my thoughts, I appreciate it. But I, I do wanna also touch on the snow event, I wanna thank our crews because I was out Saturday, I, I had someone coming in at the airport Saturday, and I, and I drove down to the airport and I kept thinking, there's no way they're coming in, they kept saying it's on time. Well, when I got to the airport, they got diverted to Chicago. Just a quick note, you think it's bad, that, one of them, there was two couples coming back, one got a Tuesday flight, would've got a Tuesday flight out of Chicago, the other one would've got Thursday out of Chicago. Chicago to Minneapolis took four days, can you believe that? So, and they ended up renting a car and came home, but, but I, I drove down to Bloomington and...
No thanks.
Did not pass a snowplow. And then coming back, I saw one, I think, and, but I came into Chaska and did something, and I saw snowplows all throughout the town, so that tells you a little bit that, you know, it's a Saturday, most people would say, nah, there's not that much traffic out, but there are more people out, I don't know what, you know, for a blizzard warning, that I don't know that I ever recall a blizzard warning in the metro area, and it truly was a blizzard.
They said, I heard yesterday that this was the first time in thirty years that there was a blizzard warning in the Twin Cities.
I don't recall one in the past, but that, yeah, that, I mean, that definitely was there without a doubt. So I, I just want to say thanks to our crew, and I know it's tough on them and out at night, they got to get up at whole dark thirty, and they're going to start hauling and then try to switch back to a normal schedule, but thanks to our crews, I appreciate that. And I think I, I heard other people talk that, hey, they saw our city trucks out, and I've heard people commenting on Facebook about how, yeah, they go to other cities and they're not even plowed, and they come into Chaska and they're plowed, so that's great. I mean, obviously, there's some residual from, from one, people blowing snow out in the street that is against the law, you shouldn't do that, and stuff like that, and then, then it starts creating a lot of mess on the streets, so.
Our city engineer who lives in another city south of here said that they didn't touch the residential streets until yesterday, I think it was yesterday afternoon. And so they're basically just
We were plowed twice, that I
Well, I think we
I mean, I mean, when it was down to where it was cleaned up
Yeah, I think we had actually already been out three times, and, yeah.
Right, so, no, that's, well, Minneapolis and St. Paul closed school today because there's streets that couldn't get their buses around.
Fasco wasn't even late, was it?
No, there shouldn't have been, so. Anyways, and then we already hit on Christmas in May, City Square West, which is, we have our meeting coming up April twenty-fifth, that's number three.
Yep, three.
Three, two to go, or one?
Depends.
Interesting conversations coming out, really, again, that's a step out of the box, that we kind of focused on that block, and now all of a sudden we're focused on multiple blocks, so it's going to be kind of exciting what really comes out of that, and it's amazing how we sit in a meeting for an hour and a half and they come back to the next meeting and they, they have all these things, so it is kind of interesting how it works, so, but that's April twenty-fifth, whatever that is. And then, do we have a council meeting the thirtieth? I thought we have something
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to discuss tomorrow at staff meeting to make a final determination.
But I thought we had something that got moved to that, like the public assessment hearing, or?
That's, we're going to, if we don't have to, we're not going to have one, because it's the fifth Monday, but we'll let you know after staff meeting.